Now, Laurlee, will you please call the roll?
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Pam Howard.
Here.
Don Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessin.
Here.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Here.
Thank you. Stu, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Stu. And Don, the mission, please?
The Thompson School District, hold on, sorry. The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers challenges and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you, Don. All right, I'm ready for adoption of the agenda, the adoption for today, June 15th, 2022. I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. That would be a first from Don and a second from Pam. Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
All right, approval of the minutes. This would be for the minutes of June 1, 2022. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for January 1, 2022.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a first from Stu and a second from Amy. Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation, we'll begin with Dr. Schaefer's report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of full board and present. It's nice to see all seven of you this evening. So this week, summer school began for nearly 1,000 students at four different locations. And this is a three-week program offering students Camp Extreme, which stands for Science, Technology, Reading, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. It's fully integrated and project-based, and the four schools we're holding it at this year are the Schools of Monroe, Pandarosa, Walt Clark Middle School, and Riverview. And so programming is pretty dynamic and extensive, and here are just some examples of what we're offering at grade-level bands. In K1, they're doing something called Jellyfish Jamboree and Math All Around You. In second and third grade, they're doing Around the World and New School Design Challenge. In grades four through five, they're doing the science behind Illusions and Magic and the Great Escape. And then in grades six through eight, they're doing what's called a mix-and-match. So there's like six or seven strands, and students can choose from those. Examples would include blastoff, Lego robotics, stop-motion animation, and the science of cooking. So it sounds like it's going to be a fun three-week. The program goes Monday through Thursday. None on Friday, it's from 8 till 12, and again, it's very well-attended. Last week, we offered a special one-week summer camp at the Thompson Career Campus focusing on three specific pathways. One was IT cybersecurity, one was manufacturing and design, and the other one was construction skilled trade. So these align with three of the four pathways at TCC. Students were gauged in hands-on learning as well as project-based activities. This was designed for middle-school students, so grades six through eight, and there was roughly 25 to 30 students that attended this one-week camp. As we head into the summer months, there are a number of summer construction projects that are in full swing. Two of our most prominent projects include the High Plains pre-K8 expansion, as well as the Conrad Ball Consolidation Project. For more information about the work that is taking place in our campuses and schools, we ask you to please visit the TSD website. This evening, I am pleased to introduce to you our newest principal for Lorraine Edmondson Elementary School. So I'm going to ask Mr. John Berg to make his way up to the podium. And as John walks up here, I'm going to tell you some great stuff about him. We're really excited to have John join us. John received his AAS in Electrical Engineering Technology in 1989 from Indiana University. Good, but Purdue, not good. So I went to, yeah, should have stayed in Bloomington. In 1999, he started as the Program Director for Deer Run Academy in Fort Wayne, Indiana. There, he was a ropes course facilitator and led outdoor activities in an experiential education and learning environment. He pursued his BA in Education, also from Indiana University, Purdue University, in 1998. And in 2002, he transitioned into a science, math, and life skills teacher in the Village Expulsion School in Fort Collins, where he taught seventh through 12th-grade students. In 2003, John was an SIED Special Education Teacher at Bennett IB World Elementary School. And during his time at Bennett, John pursued his master's degree in Special Education and graduated in 2005. In 2006, John became the Math Department Chair and Special Education Teacher at Mountainview Junior High in Fort Collins. There, he taught a diverse group of students in an alternative setting. He moved to the Pooter Transition Center in 2008, where he worked with high school students in an alternative setting. And from 2009 to 2017, John worked at Rocky Mountain High School as a Special Education Teacher and Department Lead. In 2014, John received his principal licensure, and he became the Assistant Principal at Zack Elementary in 2017, where he has continued to work. We are really excited to have John aboard as our newest principal, and we know that he'll be an asset with his vast educational experiences.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer, and Madam President, and School Board, members of Cabinet. I'm just so excited. I'm ready to jump out of my skin here. I'm really happy. In the interview process, Dr. Schaefer talked about a lot of the positive things that are going on in Thompson schools, and I'm excited to join the team. I had the opportunity last night to meet several members of our team at Edmondson. About 14 staff members were here, I think, right back here we sat. And we met for an hour and had a good conversation just around meeting each other and sharing a little bit about our families and our experiences and that type of thing. So I'm so excited to join the Edmondson team, the Thompson team. I hear great things about the School Board and the collaborative work you're doing with Cabinet and that type of thing that's benefiting kids. And that's my priority, is we want to teach kids, we want to get them the foundation from the early childhood to the fifth-grade experience at Edmondson, so that they're best prepared for middle school, which ultimately leads to post-secondary success after high school. So thank you so much. I look forward to meeting you more often. I welcome you in my building. Anytime you want to be in there, I'd love to see you in there and get a tour, and they're doing work over there, so we can't get in there for a while, but I'm excited to get in there. So, Dr. Schaefer, members of School Board, thank you so much. I'm very happy to be here.
You're welcome.
Thanks, John. Welcome aboard. Finally, I'd like to honor Dr. Matt Kuhn, who is our Chief Technology Officer. This will be Matt's last meeting, last School Board meeting with us, as he is going to be pursuing a new opportunity in a district pretty far south of here. Florida. And so Matt has done absolutely transformational work for us here in the Thompson School District, inheriting a strong program and really making it stronger. And under his leadership, you know, the district has benefited from ubiquitous technology access across the district, so we literally have one-to-one access for each and every one of our nearly 15,000 students. He has been tenacious in upgrading infrastructure, technologies, hardware, software, just all support necessary to make our facilities state-of-the-art. At the same time, he's been an incredible thought partner, a very talented member of Cabinet. And as you know, through his frequent presentations and work with you, he's done just some incredible work at the district. So we will miss you, Matt. We wish you well, and we thank you. We thank you for all that you've done during your time here in our district. And that concludes my report, but I'm going to transition immediately over to Mr. Kevin Clark, who is our Director of Athletics and Activities. And we have a lot to update you on, a lot of celebrations and exciting news. So Kevin, this is going to be a great presentation, we know.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of School Board. My name is Kevin Clark, Director of Athletics and Activities for the district, and excited to be here this evening, excited for the presentation we have. We've got some of our state championship students here, which I believe directly shows our connection to Strive 2025. As well, we're going to give you some updates on some of the facilities we have, again, just connecting our presentation to Strive 2025. We're going to start by, if Mr. Gary Glover could make his way up here. And Gary Glover, I know some of you who have been in the town, in the district, will know the name. In April, Gary Glover was inducted into the Chassa Hall of Fame, and he coached 28 years at Loveland High School. And during those years, he won one boys' state title and five girls' state championships. He was once named National Coach of the Year, and for the work, not only with the student athletes, but around the sport of gymnastics, that have kind of elevated gymnastics in the state of Colorado, he was rightfully placed into the Hall of Fame. And it was important to get him here now, because him and his family are getting ready to relocate to just outside of Nashville, where they have other family. But we did want to honor this great accomplishment from somebody who put in a 28-year career within the Thompson School District. Any questions for Gary or anything you'd like to say?
We congratulate you. When I saw that, I was thrilled, and so I'm glad you could join us tonight, so we could acknowledge you in public.
Thank you very much.
And then, not a question, but during those 28 years, Gary was also an outstanding English teacher in the Thompson School District.
And I had a wonderful mentor. I would just say, I bleed red and black. My mother went to Loveland High, I went to Loveland High, my kids graduated from there, my wife did. So it's been a wonderful time of my life, and what a great journey it's been in every way. So I appreciate being here tonight. Thank you.
We had mentioned some of the facility upgrades, and just to give you a heads-up, currently at Thompson Valley High School, the track is being demoed currently right now. And then here shortly this summer, we'll start to clean up a softball field behind the school there. We are working with the City of Loveland on an IGA, looking to just upgrade, not really upgrade, but to just look at the IGA agreement we have with the city to give Loveland High a little bit more access to North Lake Park. And then Maxmar Scoreboard Video Board, we are pursuing a video board there. We've identified four sponsors, and we're kind of just trying to get them to agree to the terms, and then we hope to have that same video scoreboard that we have at Ray Patterson. Just wanted to let you guys know, those are things coming. The first school we're going to highlight today is going to be Berthold High School, and to recognize them is going to be Michael DeWall, their Building Athletic Director.
Good afternoon. So one of our, we'll start with this list here. Show Choir received an excellent rating at a large group festival in spring. We did not defend our state championship in Knowledge Bowl, but still did well, finished seventh at Nationals this year, so Berthold High Knowledge Bowl. For the first time in school's history, the girls' golf team won the regional championship, hosted just recently over at Marion Butte Golf Course. We also had individual medalist in Anya Knoll, so she won the regional championship with a score of 85 out at Marion Butte, which is pretty good. All four young ladies, Brooklyn Tiction, Ashley Russell, Anya Knoll, and Olivia Gravestock went on to participate in state, and then they finished seventh as a team. And I believe that's the first time in Berthold Golf history that we've actually taken a team and placed at state. So good things with that young ladies' team. Again, the girls' tennis team had some state qualifiers. Our number-three singles player, Sidney Hawker, and then our number-two doubles team of Lindsay Pancost and Kelsey Thorne also qualified. Track and field, which feels like it just got over, placed, for the second year in a row, we placed third as a girls' program as well, highlighted by, we had a lot of individual that did well and contributed, but we repeated as state champions in the four-by-800-meter relay. Those, the members of that team were Olivia Kruger, Ally Padilla, Josie Diffendafer, and Casey Williams. Additionally, we had Andy Davidson placed seventh in the 300-meter hurdles, as well as the long jump, and eighth in the 100-meter hurdles. Lots of points from that young lady. Addie Kirkpatrick finished fifth in the long jump. Olivia finished fourth in the two-mile. Sydney Slosson, freshman, finished ninth in the 400 meters, open 400 meters. And J.C. Williams, a sophomore, finished second in the 800 meters and fifth in the mile. On the boys' side, we had a pretty good appearance by several young men, but highlighted by a freshman, Jaden Noor, who earlier in the week set a school record in the triple jump, improving on his final jump of the day from what was ninth place all the way up to fifth place. But then he came back on Sunday and won a state championship in the long jump. Just missed the school record by a couple inches, so we're looking for great things out of that young man. Sure, so a pretty exciting weekend at state track meet. Thank you.
I'll introduce Chris Stein, our Athletic Director and Assistant Principal at Loveland High School. High School.
Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the School Board. Just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for having us and for helping us and letting us share all of the accomplishments of our students. So I'm going to call on Caitlin Lehigh to come on up so that she can come stand in front of you. I'm going to brag on her in a little bit. But this spring season, our baseball team finished 15 and 8, went to the regional down at Chaparral High School, lost to Brighton High School, but they had a great season. Our boys' swimming team qualified the 200 medley team, 200 and 400 freestyle relays. One of the individuals, Chase Giannanato, swam the 200 and the 500 and finished 14th. Vittorio Peters also qualified in the 500 freestyle. Girls' tennis, that was a fun drive down to Pueblo. So quick jaunt down there. But we had a state champion at number one singles. That does not happen very often. That's Baylen Geis. She is out of the country or else she would be here right now, but really cool. And then also our number two doubles team, Kelly Stuckey and Scarlett Jeffries qualified and went down to the state tournament and did very, now I'm going to brag on Caitlin for a minute. Our girls' golf team had quite a run this year. Very successful, regional champions. And we were very fortunate to host the state golf tournament here in Loveland at the old course. So everybody got to come see our town, see our course and what we have to offer. That team consisted of Caitlin Lehigh, Reese Bannimer, Maren Harlow, and Jordan Bannemir. And the team finished second place. They were runners-up to Valor. But Katie finished as our individual state champion back-to-back years. So I'm going to, I'm going to give her an opportunity to answer any questions about your golf swings, if you would like, how to fix a slice, or how to shoot under 90, I can't figure it out, or if she would like to say anything.
Thank you, guys, for having me. I don't know, any questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
We congratulate you. And yeah, I had a deal being able to accomplish that and for two years, which is amazing. So we're very proud of you.
That's a lot of pressure.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
For sure, for sure.
How long have you been playing golf for?
I started playing when I was four, so 14 years.
And then do you have aspirations outside of then beyond high school? Do you want to, yeah, what are your aspirations?
I'll be playing at Fresno State next year. And then after that, I don't think I want to go pro, but we'll see if that changes in the next four years.
Do you have a favorite course around here to play?
Around here, I don't know. I've taken quite a liking to the old course.
It wasn't torn up for the tournament? Oh, okay.
No, just the parking lot.
Okay, all right. I was thinking it was. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The old course, the clubhouse was torn up. It was removed. We got quite a bit of rain. And so we were, we were worried about the course not being playable, but it was so dry that it just soaked it up. And it was a great, it was a great tournament. So let me finish up real quick with track and field. We had a couple state placers. Tyson Williams was seventh in the 100-meter dash, which is a great accomplishment. He'd been nursing a hamstring injury for most of the season. And then Kaissa Borman, I did not see here, but she took fourth in the shot. And then she was the state champion in the discus for the third year, third time. So pretty high accomplishments and super proud of what the athletes at Loveland High School accomplished. And all of these people, students, I just want to say too, as athletic as they are, they're also getting it done in the classroom. This would not be possible if they were not doing what they needed to in the classroom. And so I want to acknowledge their accomplishments there as well. So thank you. Have a good evening and we'll see you next time.
Enjoy your summer.
As Chris mentioned, Kaissa Borman, she was, she won the state disc as a freshman and her sophomore year was canceled because of COVID. So one of the impacts you don't think of when we canceled the spring, but she would have been in a very rare class of a four-time state champion. But she'll be throwing at Colorado State in the fall. So I'm going to run through Mountain View real quick. Their baseball team did qualify for the regional tournament. Their boys' swimming, they got three relays in. And Tyler Toreco placed ninth in diving. One of the things as a track official that I was very proud of is Mountain View's done a lot to bolster their unified sports. And they had eight students who went down to the Jeffco Stadium and represented. You could see some of the podium pictures there. But I know you guys have all been to unified basketball games. But one of the goals we have as a district is to give them more opportunities. Could be flag football in the fall and then the basketball season in the winter to potentially track and field in the spring. So it was neat to have those student athletes down there as well. Track and Field, Mountain View did have a great track season. Just as you guys know, the success in track and field in northern Colorado was great. They did have a high jumper. Lucky Erickson get fourth in high jump, also placed in triple jump. They had two young ladies on the high jump as they had a runner-up. Actually, I have another young lady here who is on the podium with them from Thompson Valley, who we'll be talking about shortly. So we were very well represented. Jackson Shorten, who is off to Princeton in the fall to run, finished fifth and actually got sick the weekend of the state meet. Still competed in all three, three races. And yeah, Bennett Felderkuchen, second in the 300-meter hurdles, third in the 110 hurdles, and they did place two relays down. At this time, we'll introduce Roy Trippi from Thompson Valley High School and invite our state champions up here to join him as well.
Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, Board and Cabinet, once again, thanks for the opportunity to share. And congratulations to all of our participants that have been recognized here this evening. Sports is no different than academics. And when good things are happening across the district, that's good for us. It puts out a good picture. It invites the community to be participants in what's happening. And so I'm always super proud, whether it's at our school or any of our schools, when we have success like this, because it typically means good things will eventually happen at Thompson Valley High School. And as you can see, we've had a very successful spring. Probably one of the, aside from what these two young ladies accomplished, one of the most exciting things for me actually was the first thing on the list there, and that was our esports team. We had been trying for the last several years to get an esports team going, had seen some interest from staff, had seen some interest from students, but could never quite get it up and running. And this year, thanks to our wonderful staff member, Mr. Aaron Appelt, he grabbed a handful of kids and made it happen. And we had a great season, just super exciting to see that go. And I think it's going to continue onto bigger and better things in the coming years. Our baseball team also had the chance to qualify for some postseason play and seemed to be kind of the theme for our sports teams this year. We were knocked out of the postseason by the eventual state champion. So good, bad, I don't know. But, you know, at some point, you got to play the best. And unfortunately, it wasn't our turn this year to advance, but they had a great season. Our girls' lacrosse team made it all the way to the state championship game. We ran into an unfortunate injury that kind of changed the complexion of that, of that game. But Green Mountain was very determined that day. But our girls hung in there and really just did a fantastic job. And I think represented not only our school, not only our district, but honestly, most of northern Colorado. We draw several students from surrounding district areas. And our coach, Kayla Stasi, just does a fantastic job creating a team environment with students that are coming from all different areas. Girls' tennis also got to enjoy the wonderful trip to Pueblo. And, but as fun as that trip is, honestly, the environment, you can see why they, why they hold that as a location. Just a strong, just tennis little community there. And it's really exciting, again, to be able to just wander the courts and watch all of the great tennis that's being played there. Several, several of our players qualified and had, you know, great, great showings. Number two singles there, Dasha Molen, I just want to highlight her for a second because she did get a chance to go back into the playback rounds and chose to compete even though she had sprained her ankle pretty drastically in an earlier match, but chose to go back out there and did a great job of competing. And I was super proud of her for going out and doing that. Girls' soccer team, also a fantastic year, won our first round playoff game and then, again, eliminated by the eventual state champion. So fantastic season for them, finishing second in our league overall. And just, again, great representation for what's happening here in northern Colorado and within our district with girls' soccer. And then I'm going to skip down to boys' swimming so we can really highlight these two young ladies here. Qualified a couple of our relay teams and our, our diver, Joe Smack, finished fourth in the state. He will tell you that he is very disappointed in that. But diving is one of those particular sports and activities that it can be a finicky thing. And a couple little tweaks here and there, and the next thing you know, you're not scoring as well as you wanted to. But he just continued to stay focused. And at one point, he was a little bit further down that list and he really came back strong with his last few dives. And finishing fourth was a tremendous thing for him. He's also one of our highly, highly competitive wrestlers, which to me is a very unique combination of sports to be a very competitive wrestler and a diver in that sense. So really, really good year for Joe. Our track and field team, our girls placed third. Several state placers, one again, Paige Phelps in the shot put, Chloe Wooden was third in discus. And then we had our two state champions here. Lizzie Human, our state champion in the high jump, so she can jump higher than everybody else. And then we have Avery Kennison, who was a state champion in the 100-meter dash, and fourth in the 200-meter dash. So she's really fast. And as I shared at our, at our end-of-year kind of awards, she's like literally the fastest woman in 4A track. It's like you can't get any faster than that. So Avery and Lizzie, congratulations to you. I will give them an opportunity to step to the podium, awkwardly say thank you, and wait for any questions that they may have.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Well, congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. Did you have any questions? Sorry?
What grade are you guys?
I'm a junior.
And I just graduated. I'm going to CMU, Colorado Mesa.
Oh, good.
Will you be running there?
Oh, good. Great. Thanks for joining us tonight. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Of course. Thanks for coming.
Again, what an exciting spring. Through the relay, six individual state champions. Throw the relay on there. There's 10 state champions that we got to recognize, a Hall of Fame coach. And then the last thing I would do is Michael Hausman and his team, if you've had a chance, they've done a great thing partnering with the athletics program and really highlighting 50 years of Title IX. It's actually next Thursday celebrates 50 years. And he's gone back and him and his team, we've highlighted a student, a former student athlete from every school and how that athletics background has set the foundation for their careers. And so it's just been a great thing. So if you've had a chance, if you haven't had a chance, those stories are phenomenal. But that's all I have unless you guys have any questions for me.
Kevin, I'm always curious because anecdotally, it seems to me that Thompson School District has continually, like my kids all, you know, played sports, have a lot of state champions. Is there a formal or informal ranking amongst like the 4A districts for the, for each year of how many state champions each school district has?
Not necessarily that. I know at one point, they were doing almost a formula where they took the entire school year and based on how you did in all sports combined. And they kind of had like this kind of ranking system of which was the, the top athletics. But, I mean, you've nailed it, Pam, for, for track and field and really swimming. I mean, it's phenomenal. And then obviously, when, when you're, I mean, just state champions year after year after year.
It just seems like we're consistently at the top for every sport, I mean, so many sports, right? It's not just dominating in one, you know, area, but it's really across the board. So.
I mean, you look at Kaissa Borman from Loveland, we have the best thrower in the state. We have the fastest young lady in the state. We have the, the young lady that jumps the highest in the state. I mean, it's just phenomenal. And then top that off with, you know, the best golfer back-to-back years. I mean, potentially could have been a three-timer. So no, we're fortunate that, I think some of our youth programs are good and then.
Yeah. Because I feel like as a community, we've always really done a good job of kind of keeping that small-town support and feel and chilson and the, you know, the early years, the, you know, the, the teams and that sort of thing, and then the swim clubs and all of that. So I just, I know there's no formula, but it just seems like Thompson School District is always way up there. So.
It is. And again, just appreciate you guys giving us that time. And I'll continue to say it, it's the number one dropout program we have for our students is to get them tied into an athletic and an activity. And, you know, this is just icing on the cake when we get to recognize the excellence that we did tonight. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate you. Okay, the next item is the Board and Committee Reports. And your assignment for this time was to highlight or reflect on one item for the school year that really stood out to each of you. So.
End of year.
Oh, okay. End of year is good.
I'm doing all year.
I'm doing all year. Okay.
Some of them.
Okay. All right. Yeah, you can choose something to highlight that has gone well for you. I'm going to start this time. I always go last. And, and mine follows up what Kevin has been doing is that my favorite thing of all the things that we do is the highlighting of the participation, first of all, of the student accomplishments each time. But also, I love having the schools come and visit each month or each board meeting. And I think those are highlights for all of us. So that would be mine. And I'll let you pick which way you want to go with it. And we'll start with Amy this time.
I just appreciate the opportunity to tour the schools and be in the buildings and see the students, staff firsthand. So that's always something that I just look forward to is being right there. So thanks.
Alexandra?
So for me, I took it as one to share a celebration that impacted my role. And so I was thinking about it more as far as all of the end-of-the-year celebrations and graduations and things we went to. And it was wonderful being there and hearing about all the accomplishments of all the kids. But the one thing that really stood out to me amongst all of them was when at the Loveland High School graduation, the principal, Mr. James, asked all of the kids who were first, first-time high school graduates to stand in their families. And there were a lot of them. And that I thought was really impressive. And then he shared that he himself was a first-generation high school graduate. And that was impactful, like as much as we appreciate and recognize all the incredible accomplishments of, you know, the people here tonight and stuff like that, it's just as much or more of an accomplishment for some of these kids who are doing something that nobody else in their family has ever done. And I think we should certainly not lose sight of that.
Thank you. Dawn?
So since you expanded what I thought it was originally.
I'm sorry.
No, it's perfect. It's perfect. I would say that seeing the growth and the changes that have happened at the Ferguson campus and what that has meant to the students at Ferguson is a BFD to me. And frankly, you know, we're graduating more kids than we ever have. And that's what we're here for, right? We, from the second they walk in, their first day of school, way back, this is what you hope for. This is what we start out with. And, and to know that every decision that we make up here is ultimately to get more kids graduated. My heart is, you know, I've been part of the Ferguson community for 35 years, 36 years now. And to see it elevated and embraced and, and to know that the kids see that and feel that and have their place as contributing members of this community is really awesome. And we've seen the biggest graduating classes over and over and over again. And it's awesome.
Thank you.
Oops. I'm going to have to kind of go along with what Amy said. I think getting into the
the schools is definitely the highlight for me. I've been, you know, of course, on the board since 2013. So I've been into schools every year, right? But this year was so impactful because it was going into those schools and seeing those kids and those teachers learning, teachers teaching kids learning in the masks. And they didn't miss a beat, right? They're just, it was phenomenal. The adaptability, the resiliency I saw in our staff and our students, learning through the pandemic. It was absolutely transformative to me. It just showed me the sincere dedication of our staff and how they are still able to inspire our students to learn no matter what they were wearing or what they were going through and absences. And so I just have to say that was the most impactful for me this year.
Stu?
I'm gonna share a personal high point. I was very honored that the senior parents at Berthold High School invited me to be the baccalaureate speaker. I was very honored to be able to do that. And then also to speak at the Berthold High School graduation. For those of you who don't know, I'm a Berthold High School alum. And so in my position as a board member, to be invited to speak at my alma mater was a very special experience for me.
I took it the way I think everyone else thought it was.
I'm sorry. Apparently you can't read my mind very well.
But so along, I went to the graduation at the Community Connections House. And to me, that was just another great way of discovering some of these hidden gems that we have in the district that I was not aware of. And it's also for me, another example of what happens when the school district is focused 100% on education. The joy in those kids' faces, that they were so proud, that they were graduating. It was just, it was just really a great experience. And that's something I would love to see as fun some more. I was talking with the principal there and he's just, he's just growing the program, which is really awesome for these kids to have some way to graduate and be equipped with life skills. I just, I just, that is really what makes all of this worth it, I think.
As I listened to everybody, I was, oh yeah, that was right. I could have done that. Me too. So yeah, it's okay. We all had good points. All right. It's time for public comments. So this is the part of the meeting where the public has an opportunity to make a comment. There were two signups or opportunities, two columns tonight, right? Were there two different signups?
There's not two different signups. Just one sheet, but the topic.
Okay. So we have two different public comment opportunities. One is just the regular time. And then we have one at a later time on the agenda for budget. So Stu, would you read the...
Sure. Because the board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it will schedule time during its regular board meetings for brief comments and questions from the public. The board will set a time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting. The time for each speaker will be limited to three minutes and each individual will only be recognized once. If there's a large number of speakers, the board may elect to take comments for one hour before the business meeting and conclude public comment after the business meeting. Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topic related to the board's conduct of the schools. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concern them, but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Personnel matters will be discussed in an executive session.
And over to you, Dawn.
All right. So we've got three speakers this evening. You'll have three minutes. The light will turn on when you start. And then when you get to 30 seconds, 30 seconds remaining, it'll turn yellow and then it will beep and turn red at the end of your time. First up, we have Tara Jeffney. Jeffrey, thank you.
I'd first like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns. I also greatly appreciated the community forums that were held and your quick responses to my concerns. I would like to share my thoughts and experience with the social emotional learning or SEL program, specifically the second step program that is being taught in Thompson schools. When researching the second step program, I came across an article by a teacher who had resigned as he couldn't in good conscience teach the materials being taught. He stated that although the lesson plans were good, he had a problem with the accompanying videos being shown. He also felt that parents had a right to view the material being taught to their children. I asked my son's teacher to view the materials being taught. She gave me the lesson plans and a code to enter the second step program. When I went to enter the code, it said I needed an administrator to access it. I was told there wasn't a way to give me access to the videos. I then contacted the school's principal and she was very accommodating and prompt in setting up a time for me to come in and view the materials in her office. I did view many of the videos and I didn't have a concern with them, although some parents may have had problems with the content. I know social emotional learning is nothing new and I understand that many kids may need help regulating their emotions, decision making, et cetera. I do wonder if there is another way to address at-risk youth for social emotional issues and refer them to trained professionals such as psychologists or counselors who are better equipped to deal with these issues. I do think as a parent, it is not only our right, but our responsibility to view all materials being used to teach our children social, emotional, and morality issues. I do appreciate our caring teachers and that they help our kids with basic morals such as politeness, responsibility, and being kind to others. However, at the same time, I have concerns with the schools giving teachers the added responsibility of teaching emotional, social, and issues regarding sexuality and gender ideology. Going forward, I would like parents to be able to easily access all SEL materials and any programs of the mentioned topics. This way, parents would be able to have conversations with their children at home or be able to opt out if they feel necessary. One possibility would be to have a parent portal where we can access the materials and subject matter being taught in real time. It would also be helpful to give parents access to all second step materials in a more convenient manner. Thank you all once again for this platform. And I'm looking forward to continued open dialogue and coming up with actions to be taken so parents can be involved and continue to have a voice in the education of our children. Thank you.
Next is Heather Van Bentham.
Good evening. Heather Van Bentham, Berthold. I worked at a cancer center for a time. During one executive meeting, comments from patients and visitors were being reviewed and discussed. Several comments asked why, since sugar feeds cancer, were there bowls of candy and vending machines in the cancer center? The center leadership were defensive, insisting that sugar does not feed cancer and tasking the center's nutritionist with developing counter education for this misinformation. I've always been interested in medical health and nutrition and asked if I could help. It seemed possible to me there might be a link between sugar and cancer. I was told by the top three women who ran the center, all PhDs, the following. Sometimes we have to put our patients on a pure glucose solution to keep them alive during their infusion treatments. I will consider any information you find, but only if it is supported by multiple clinical trials. If you're really interested in this, you should get a master's degree in oncology. In the years since I left the center, there's been lots of additional study done. And it turns out that yes, in fact, there are strong links between sugar and cancer. The patients and their comments were not misinformation. They weren't wrong. The PhDs who ran the center were relying solely on their education to guide them rather than allowing for the possibility that their education itself may have been erroneous at times. When it comes to current thinking on transgenderism, we risk falling into the same trap. We are told loudly and repeatedly that many people are misgendered and in serious and immediate danger from suicide and homelessness if they are not immediately correctly regendered, started on puberty blockers and hormone adjustments, and crucially protected from their own parents during this process. The UK Health Secretary recently said, quote, "The NHS services in this area of gender identity are too narrow. They're overly affirmative and in fact, they are bordering on ideological." Sweden drastically reversed course on gender transitioning in 2021 with the National Board of Health and Welfare finding in part that gender dysphoria has a high incidence of co-occurring psychiatric diagnoses, which in themselves sharply increase risks of suicide. Quote, "Therefore, it is not possible to ascertain to what extent gender dysphoria alone contributes to suicide since these psychiatric diagnoses often precede suicide." A recent study here in the US found, quote, "Strong evidence for the claim that suicides among young people have increased significantly since 2010 in states that have a policy allowing minors to access healthcare without parental consent. Let's not be like the cancer center. The risks are far too great in being wrong. No more of this gender confusion issuing from so-called education that comes from our schools."
Erin Barajas.
Hi, everyone. I'm Erin Barajas. I'm a mom from Berthold. Tonight, I would like to discuss a response that I received from a member of the board and an email that I sent after the last time I was up here. The statement was, and this is a quote, "As is the case with SEL, equity policies, CRT discussions, et cetera. What is the case here is not the same as in other places, some of which are discussed factually or not in the media." And this is an unquote. This seems to be the overall temperature in Thompson. And even with some of the parents too, who are just simply not aware of the day-to-day encounters that happen in the schools. That's okay, because I'm here. I'll help us out. So let me be very clear. Okay, this is what's going on in Thompson schools right now. Protect trans youth posters are hanging in Turner Middle School. Discussing gender dysphoria and sexuality with our students is happening inside of both Ivy and Turner. There's BLM posters hanging inside of all the classrooms. That's Black Lives Matter posters. My son, actually in fourth grade at Ivy, brought home a voice recording of an SEL class where his teacher, fourth grade, discusses, it's okay being a male presenting person wearing female presenting clothing under their shirt, which was the context was a bra. Identifying as homosexual and non-binary is perfectly fine and implicating that if you don't believe these things, you will not grow as a person. I'm happy to send a transcript of that recording. It's 16 minutes and so it won't, it's huge. If you want to request it, I think everybody has my email. So again, do not tell me that this isn't happening in our schools. It is. I have the pictures. I have the recording. And when we are passing off this responsibility as it's not my job, the district is allowing teachers to do and say whatever they want in the classrooms. Leaders in this district must work towards a realistic plan to ensure accountability in the classrooms so that teachers do not impose their personal beliefs on our children. The idea that it's not happening here is naive at best. And statistically, if it's happening in Berthold, it's happening in the other schools too. I was actually able to have a very encouraging meeting with Jennifer and Melissa to discuss the direction of SEL in the district, which was so awesome and refreshing. I can assure everyone in attendance tonight that the parents are getting involved. And we are looking forward to the in-focus and second step curriculum being available to review for each grade level and the opportunity to give our input. I'm kind of envisioning a committee. I don't know, you know, per grade level. And we'll get together and we'll let you guys know what we think on it. Hopefully, we can all continue to be responsible in the choices that we're making for our kiddos. And please, I'm begging you, do not bury your head in the sand on this. Do not think that this is not happening here. It is. And again, I'll show it to you. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We have one call in. Public comment.
Hi, my name is Megan Mahappy, Berthold, Colorado. I'm calling about the discussion over the SEL curriculum that is being taught in schools. I have been employee of Thompson School District, teaching second grade for the last six years. And I have integrated SEL in my classroom in one way or another for the last six years as I've been teaching. SEL really is immeasurable, having great results as I teach my kids. It gives kids an ability to really connect with their classrooms and their community in the classrooms. SEL strategies that I teach are problem solving, how to solve conflict, collaboration with classmates, responsibility, communication, things like that that are really vital in our classroom. It also helps kids have a better attitude towards school and increases their academic performance. Really, it's just about giving kids the tools to understand how they're feeling, why they're feeling that way, and then how they can really think about how to manage their emotions, good or bad, and how that impacts themselves and others in a classroom setting. These are the same tools that as an adult, I use in my working situations, that I use in my relationships. And so again, social emotional learning is so valuable in classrooms. And I think that it's something that absolutely needs to be taught. I can't imagine you asking a teacher in Thompson School District, as they do teach it, and then somebody responding that they didn't because it's just kind of embedded into teaching. Thank you for your time.
That was the only one correct. This concludes our public comment. Now, moving on to action consent items. Now, these are the items that we have presented to us at previous meeting or involve items that need approval. Board members, if you have any item you want pulled for further discussion, please let me know now. I will read off each item and then we will vote on them as a group. 5.1, approval of personnel extra duty coaching recommendations. 5.2, approval of expenditures over $50,000. 5.3, approval of Head Start grant. 5.4, approval of second reading policy GDD, classified, and non-licensed administrative professional technical staff vacations and holidays. 5.5, approval of Ferguson High School calendar variance. And 5.6, approval of 2021, 2022 supplemental budget update. So I will take a motion to approve the action consent items as presented. So moved. Dawn?
Second.
Pam, I have a first from Dawn, a second from Pam for the approval. So Laura Lee, would you call the roll?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem.
Aye.
Anthony Raffelt.
Did we get everybody?
I'm sorry. Yeah. I was caught off guard.
I was too. All right. So it was, yeah, everybody, motion passed. All right. We are now going to go to the public participation for the budget. So this is 2.1, 6.1, excuse me, 2022, 2023 budget public hearing. And is there anything you need to say prior to it, Gordon? Okay. So no one signed up for it. So I assume there's nobody here that wanted to speak to the budget. Yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's what I'm doing. Anybody have any desire? Okay. So hearing none. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. That would be 7.1. And this is, the process that we're going to go through now is the approval of the 2022, 2023 proposed budget adoption process. And there's three different items we'll be voting on. So we'll be voting on each one separately. So we've been discussing them for the last two months. So we should all be really familiar with what we have. And we've had public forum as well as an option for people to participate at this point. So 7.1 is the approval of resolution of budget adoption. Gordon, I'm gonna let you take the lead, see if there's anything you'd like to say. I think you have a little bit of something to share.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. Presented for your consideration of adoption is the budget, as you said, Madam President, that's been presented and discussed over the last couple of months in parts. And now this is the full document. The draft was presented two weeks ago, the proposed budget. There have been nothing, no changes other than a very slight, about $3,000 There have been nothing, no changes, other than a very slight, about $3,000 adjustment that took place in the general fund. So the three resolutions are statutory requirements for adoption of the budget. It's first, the adoption of the budget, adoption of the appropriations, which then means that that's giving the district personnel and staff the ability to spend those dollars in accordance with the budget. And the third resolution is if there is a spend-down of beginning fund balance from the beginning of the year, that is giving the permission to make those expenditures. I'd answer any questions that there might be about any of those documents or the process in general.
Okay. Go ahead, Nancy.
In the time that I've been looking at the budget and really looking at the numbers, I think it's important to note that the budget is authorizing close to $300 million. We get kind of lost and stuck on the general fund. And I think it's important to note that we will have about 18, over 18,000 per funded pupil count. And when I look back at fiscal year '16, that's about a 46%, you know, approximating increase in seven years while we have declining enrollment. There's a lot of great, high-level reports, but I don't find them detailed enough to really understand the FTE schedule. It doesn't even show all of the employees that we have, only general fund. You have to look at the non-FTE. I think we could do some different reports for that. There's a lot of concern about that we're not allocating resources equitably. And so that's where I see that we need to start looking and considering the way that we provide these reports so that everyone can see in full transparency according to Strive 2025 Focus Number Four, so that everyone can see how much is being allocated to their school, that program, Atlas Source. We were all elected to govern the school district, which includes transparency and accountability for how the taxpayer money is spent. I cannot and will not vote for a budget that I cannot explain to any Thompson community member about what or how the money is being spent. We've had numerous people ask, how much money is, will the Equity Department program cost? And it's not in, you cannot see it in this budget detail. I'm saying, you know, I have no doubt that the numbers are all accounted for. I'm saying that the numbers must be presented in a way that is more easily understandable and everyone can understand it and understand that everything is being allocated the way, with a focus on learning, and if it's not, then what is it? And so that's just where I am. And I get it's a symbolic vote. I get it. But this is what I stand and I believe in.
So Nancy, if that's the case, then it needs to come out prior to our final piece of discussion next year, please. And we're going to move on to Stu. Did you have a question?
No, not a question, just a comment. Gordon, thank you to you and your team for the very clear and detailed responses that you offered. The board knows Nancy submitted a number of questions. You and your team answered them to an extent that satisfied my questions or any questions that I might have had, and I appreciate the time and the detail that you invested in providing those answers to the board.
I think we all do. Okay, I will take a motion to approve the resolution of the budget adoption.
So moved.
Second. I have a first from Dawn and a second from Pam. Laura Lee, would you call the roll?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
No.
There is a vote of six to one. All right. 7.2, approval of the resolution of appropriation 2022-2023 budget. Gordon, will you review what this is real quickly? I know you talked about it just a second ago. This is, well, I'll let you share.
It's providing the district staff the authority to expend dollars according to the expenditures shown in the budget.
Okay, questions?
The way that the budget process works, and I do appreciate the work that you do, Gordon, this is not about your work. But there is not as much opportunity to put forth questions, and there should never be an expectation that we all know how we're going to vote and that we have an obligation to vote the way we think is best. And I do not need to let anybody know what my vote is prior to the vote.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the resolution of appropriation 2022-2023 budget.
So moved.
I believe, first from Pam, a second from Dawn. And Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
No.
Okay, 7.3, approval of resolution of use of beginning fund balance. And this is the opportunity to spend the money, no, yeah, spend the money?
If revenue is less than expenses, then it requires a spend of the beginning fund balance. This is a normal practice. An example that I would offer is with the building fund. So where the dollars associated with the bond are located, there's a reserve balance that's in that fund from the very beginning, and each year, there are expenditures that reduce that opening or beginning fund balance. That would be an example of what this resolution is appropriating, allowing.
Okay, thank you. I need, yes.
Sure.
So the amounts here listed on the paper, are those the amounts that are, will be spent from that beginning balance, or is that the beginning balance?
That is the amount that will be reduced from the beginning balance. That is correct, your first statement.
Thank you.
I ask if I had a motion.
I would like to move that we vote to approve the resolution of use of beginning fund balance.
I'll second.
We have a first from Dawn and a second from Stu. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Gordon. And I think we need you for one more item. Okay. We now have a discussion-action item, 8.1, and this is approval of the State of Colorado Interest-Free Cash Flow Loan Program Resolution. So Gordon, explain that one to us all.
Certainly. Thank you for the opportunity to explain the program. This is a timing-related issue or cash flow-related issue. A significant portion of the district's revenue comes from property tax collections, and those collections take place primarily in the second half of the year, especially in the March, April, May, and June timeframe. So a disproportionate amount of revenue is received in that four-month period where expenditures that are appropriated in the budget or called for in the budget are typically more uniformly spread throughout the 12-month period. So the State of Colorado has recognized that challenge for some districts and has offered up a, this program has been in existence for quite some time, that offers a interest-free temporary loan program that is pledged against the tax collections that are known or highly expected to be coming from property tax collections each year, and it has to be settled within the same year. So the borrowing typically takes place historically for Thompson School District in the January, February timeframe where there's borrowing, and then the first large remittance of property taxes from the county treasurers to the district pays back that balance to the state. So this is something they, the state sells bonds or funding items or items that are vehicles for funding, and they typically start that pricing or the sizing of what that offering needs to look like in July, mid-July is when they have that satisfied or when they determine that. And since the board does not meet typically during the month of July, it's a request to, an adoption of this resolution is permission from the board for the district to participate in that state interest-free loan program.
And is this something most school districts participate in?
Not necessarily. I just spoke with the person at the state level that coordinates this, and I think there, his comment to me today was there are about 22 districts of the 178 that do this. Thompson is one of the, I won't say one of the smaller, but it certainly impacts districts that have a high property assessed valuation that may get all of their funding from the School Finance Act from their property taxes and have no PPR or no revenue from the state equalization factor. So think of a smaller district with a high oil and gas assessed valuation. They satisfy their requirements from a School Finance Act perspective by collecting the taxes locally. They get their full allotment from that. So it really creates a timing issue for their cash flow when they don't have any cash over the first half of the year, and they do over the second half of the year, they get all of their revenue or a large portion of it. Denver Public Schools is a big participant, the largest in the state. For a frame of reference, as you can see in the memo, Thompson School District has borrowed about $7 million in the last two years and repaid all of that in March with the first tax collections. Denver Public Schools borrowing, I believe, is in the $40 or $50 range.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions, anybody? Okay, because this was a discussion-action item, I would take a motion to move the approval of the State of Colorado Interest-Free Cash Flow Loan Program Resolution to an action item. So I have a first from Dawn.
Second.
And a second from Amy. So Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Motion carries. 8.2, oh, nope, now we have to vote on it as a motion. So now I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
So Dawn, and then Stu. And Laura Lee, please call the roll again.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Gordon, and we appreciate your hard work with everything you've been doing for us on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. A point of privilege, if I may, very briefly, thanks to my team and really the district as a whole. There's budget managers throughout the district in all departments that play a role in the building of the budget. This is a six-month exercise that started about the middle of December, and there's been a lot of people involved that have put in a lot of time as well. So I don't want the misperception that this is a Gordon Jones budget. It is a district-wide budget. Thank you for their efforts.
We appreciate that. So thanks to your team also. All right, 8.2, approval of the Conrad Ball consolidation budget adjustment. Todd, hi.
Evening, Madam President. Board Education, Dr. Schaefer. Todd Picone, Chief Operations Officer. For recommendation tonight is an increase to the Conrad consolidation construction budget. So as the board may remember, in June of '21, the project scope and budget was identified. Since then, we've encountered significant inflation costs, a couple code issues that make up the proposed adjustment of the $3.8 million. We'll say that in the last week, we did meet with the CBOC Committee to review the proposed changes. Although you'll notice that the budget is not proposed really to be taken from bond funds, we thought it was appropriate and necessary to be transparent with what we were proposing and let the CBOC Committee review and ask questions about the proposed budget adjustment. I will just note that there's three funds we are looking at taking the proposed project budget from. It's a land sale from our land we have for sale up north, the 92 acres. It's the Monroe Elementary School proceeds, once we sell that, which will be going on the market here in the next couple of months. It'll be taking the proceeds from that. And then it'll be taking some of the proceeds from the water shares that the district sold in the last month, the excess water shares we sold in the last month. So it's really those three budgets are the main. We are taking a little bit from the bond because there's more abatement, and that is the $130,000 noted from the bond environmental. So for vote tonight, consideration is the increase of project budget of the 3.8, approximately $3.8 million. And this will satisfy the original scope that was presented to the board and community in the past community meetings and board meetings. Is there any questions?
Questions? Any questions?
So I was listening at the CBOC meeting as well, and I think one of the questions they asked was as far as like, there was still some question about whether this would be the final number, or have you had those further meetings, and is that still a little bit iffy?
It is, I will say, more solidified, but not final. Within the next couple of weeks, you know, as the board takes, you know, the month of July off, we are getting those final numbers in the next couple of weeks. The initial report back is we're still within what we're asking here, that there doesn't seem to be any other surprises or inflation factors coming into the cost. So as of right now, we're within this requested budget amount.
Then my second question, is there a backup plan if Monroe doesn't sell or something goes awry there?
Yeah, so we do have, so, you know, we didn't touch the bond contingency, so that's still, you know, could take that risk away. There are still other additional funds, for example, the water shares, we actually sold those for 3.1, I think it was about $3.1 million and change. So there's some risk, you know, that is under contract and actually money's being transferred. So there are some dollars there as well that we could. So I would say first, you know, as we talk to it with staff and leadership and with CBOC is really trying to use that first. If that were to fall through, then we do have bond dollars still for backup, but we are protecting those for future risks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, this was also an action, a discussion-action item. So I will take a motion to move the Conrad Ball consolidation budget adjustment to an action item.
So moved.
Dawn.
Second.
And Alexandra. I have first from Dawn, second from Alexandra. So Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Okay, now I need a motion for approval of the Conrad Ball consolidation budget adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
Dawn, and then Stu. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion's carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the discussion items. 9.1 is the Special Education Advisory Committee update. Melissa and Nancy.
Evening, Madam President. Members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Schneider, Chief Academic Officer. Tonight, we have an update from our Special Education Advisory Committee, which is a committee that gathers regularly to discuss and advise on our services to our special education students and students with disabilities. This is not a statutorily required committee, but we do choose to do it and take that high standard. So we will be hearing from our co-chair, Ms. Sarah Ogryn, I hope I pronounced that right, and Ms. Nancy Ingles, our Director of Special Education.
Good evening, Madam President. Dr. Schaefer and board directors. Our Special Education Advisory Committee, SEAC, had the opportunity to come here in March and tell you about who they are and what they do. And at the conclusion of this school year, they're happy to be back in June to talk a little bit about their priorities that are very important to them as an advisory committee. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah Ogryn. Sarah served as our committee chair this year, and she will go through the slides. served as our committee chair this year, and she will go through the slides.
Evening, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, and Board of Education, and the CAC parent co-chair. Uh, we're happy to announce that we have filled the vacant co-chair position with, um, Kimberly Aguilar. She is a community partner. As Nancy said, over the last three years, we have talked and learned about a lot of items, approximately 150 items that the committee voted on, um, and separated into celebrations, recommendations, and needs work category. I, I will highlight for you our top celebrations and recommendations. So, our biggest accomplishment we thought we had, it was presenting to the board for the first time and having the "We Choose to Include" proclamation read. And, um, look forward to updating you annually. Sorry, I'm not a public speaker. This is like my biggest fear out of everything.
Take a deep breath, it's okay.
You're doing great.
Yeah, you're good.
I guess it comes with the territory. So, another thing we are proud of is TSD has outperformed the state in school year 2020, 2021 with a ranking of meets requirements for special education. I also thank the board and the district for, um, helping fix a shortage that we were experiencing by increasing pay, allowing us to hire more, and also beginning to implement a training program for our parents. Other celebration that CAC had, um, in the district specifically, it's, um, that special education professional development hours will now be required for all educators to renew their licenses. We didn't have to ask for it. And our, last but not least, we have Dr. Schaefer including students with disabilities on his student committees and the excellent write-up he did in the spring highlighting the CAC, special education, and.
It wasn't really good, was it?
It was. It was really great.
Yeah.
For our, our big recommendations, and you guys should have all received a one-page celebration and a one-page recommendation, five recommendations, um, was to align CAC meetings and communication standards and hy, with hybrid tech, technology, staff note-taker, public access, childcare, and research on the website and at the family resource center, which would align with focus area four. Second recommendation is to prioritize recruiting and retaining highly qualified, exceptional students. Align with focus area three. Um, another recommendation, we picked five, there were several on each page. So, to update school, district school and classroom rules and expectations to enter, inclusive learning differences, eliminating conflict between needs stated Update rules to be prescribed, inclusive of learning differences, and eliminating conflict between needs stated in the 504 and IAPs, affect expectations and the collective, for example, including a statement asking if accommodations are needed for school activity in alignment with focus area one. We would like the, we would like the district to develop. Develop a district transition service training module that includes the content of the CDE transition toolkit, or use the, the CDE training modules. Um, one of our members, Rendi, and who is staff, but in another district, so she got to take it as a staff, and, um, I joined her in the training, and it was very educational for us. Um, so, we would like to require all high schools, high school, 18 to 20-year-old, 21-year-old case managers and student services coordinators to complete the training, focus area three. One thing interesting about our CAC is all of our kiddos are in this process right now. Five of us have kiddos in the transition process right. And last but not least, to implement "We Choose to Include." Why do we want to implement "Implement We Choose to Include"? Unless authentic inclusion is an expectation throughout an entire school system, it often stops after transitioning to a new teacher or school. Inclusive best practices must be computed from the, communicated from the top down. It is sustainable, it is unsustainable and exhausting when it comes from the bottom up. A quote by Tim Vegas. And, can you go back Lauralee, please?
Yeah, sure.
Um, the three points that we want to hit with "We Choose to Include" is define and teach what is a disability and what a disability looks like or does not look like. Like inclusion means, and what, what is, what people first language means and how to use it. Graphic showing that not all disabilities are physical disabilities or visible. And last summer, I believe it was, it's been a minute now, last summer, we did, um, a t-shirt contest, t-shirt design contest, and this was the winning design submitted by Stacy Shout. There's a whole story that goes with. Any of you have any questions?
I'd just like to jump in and said you did great. Um, really, I know that, that the worst thing you can imagine that isn't actually awful. Um, I hope it wasn't awful.
Standing, I didn't think so.
You did great, and so I really appreciate you stepping up and representing for the, for CAC.
Questions for her in particular?
Yeah. Uh, first, a question about the artist who created the t-shirt. I'm assuming that Stacy is a student?
She's a parent of student.
Okay. Even so, it's a great t-shirt. Um, congratulations on your celebrations. I read the list of celebrations and the list of recommendations, and I appreciated having them. And I think my question is actually for Nancy. So, all of the recommendations at this point are truly recommendations. None of them have been implemented yet, is that correct?
On the, on the long list.
Uh-huh.
Um, there may be some that are in process, but essentially, yes, they are recommendations, uh, that we discuss on a regular basis and determine ways to incorporate these recommendations into our daily work.
All right. And then my next question is, the list of recommendations was somewhat lengthy. How do you choose which recommendations you want to implement? If there were 20 or 25, how do you identify, um, well, we want to, we want to implement number four, for example. What process do you use in choosing, and then what process do you use in actually implementing?
The process really happens through the committee meetings. So, we meet once a month. Uh, typically, it's myself, Charlie Carter, and some of our special education coordinators with the CAC committee. And we discuss, um, ways that there are recommendations that are folding in naturally to the work that we're doing. We discuss maybe, um, if there are, um, some other steps that need to be taken that might take some time. And so, we discuss it as a committee and prioritize from there.
All right. And then just one final comment. It seems that the Disability Inclusion Week, um, weaves very well into our equity policy and the, uh, the intention of that.
Thank you.
Might be both you and Gordon. So, on this transition services where you're asking, you know, for this transition toolkit to be implemented in the training, I'm guessing that it's not just a matter of needing the budgeted money for it, but it's also kind of just laying out that whole program and then implementing it. Is there a way, when you, as you are coming up with your recommendations, working with Gordon, that some of these, um, because this is the last meeting of the year, and I know it's your first year presenting, we could get them presented sooner so that if there was, you know, a budget impact, we would be able to address it for the coming year? Because I don't think we could do anything now with this, right?
So, um, just like we were discussing, uh, as we're discussing these recommendations throughout the year and from year to year, um, we're able to identify if there are budget needs associated with that early. We don't necessarily get this list per se at the end of the year. This list of recommendations is reflective of the conversations that we're having throughout the year. Um, and so, your question about the transition, uh, training in particular, these resources are available from Colorado Department of Education, uh, free of charge. So, it's really a matter of us accessing resources and thinking about how to embed this in the training that we already do with our staff.
So, if I understand, you're saying that if you had identified some recommendation earlier in the year that had a budget impact, you would have already reached out and worked with Gordon's team, and it would already be reflected in the budget? Did I understand that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Couldn't resist, sorry.
[laughing]
Sorry, Dr. Schaefer. This, uh, just as Nancy referred to and as you're referring to, it's part of the budget templates. When I mentioned the broader team, the budget managers, um, budget managers within each department have the flexibility of identifying those items that are priorities for them, um, reallocating dollars within their own budgets. Um, this would be a perfect example of that on the templates that are delivered to budget managers, usually in the, uh, late January, early February.
Thank you both. Sarah, you did a great job. We appreciate you. Just know that. We'll see you next year, right, Sarah? Okay, um, nine point two, Student Employee Update. Kristin and Matt.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Schaefer, I'm Dr. Matt Kuhn, Chief Technology Officer, and I'll be presenting with my colleague, Kristin Batigie, uh, in operations about student employment. Kristin, you want to?
Evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Schaefer. Thanks so much for having us here tonight to speak a little bit about student positions. So, we have a couple of avenues that we have used, um, over time and are really expanding these programs, especially in the current years. So, uh, career-wise apprenticeship, and I know Matt's going to talk a little bit more about that, that's one avenue, as well as internships. So, a lot of times that takes place in the summer, but can also take place during the school year. And our grounds department also has a history of hiring students, um, for our summer mowing positions. So, let Matt jump in about career-wise, and we'll kind of tag team from there.
So, what you see on the screen here are the five career-wise apprentices in ITS. Um, that's Jacob, Katie, Saber, Cole, and Ben. And those five started in various places. Uh, in ITS, we layer our opportunities. So, the first layer is one semester unpaid volunteer, but you do get one CTE credit as tech support intern. And it's a CTE credit, uh, so they can do that. It's, it's kind of like their first toe in the water to see if they really like working on technology. So, we give them some training over the summer to do that. We've already got a, a crop of 12 of them ready for the fall in our high schools, and we'll be training them for a couple of weeks this July. Out of that crop of 12, four of them want to take it a little further than that. They're like ones that have already done this a semester or two. And those four want to be employees with us during the summertime. So, they get paid internships for six weeks over the summertime to do jobs like, um, repairing Chromebooks or other devices, um, cleaning and updating devices, upgrading, uh, projection systems, inventory, and UTA deployment assistance. So, they're a great help to our technicians, and they often free up our technicians to do more complicated work that could take a lot of their effort, but their interns are in the school doing the other part for them. Uh, then, of course, if they really want to take it up a notch, they can do the three-year apprenticeship with career-wise, like these five students have done. And these five started out usually as one of those other, uh, opportunities. So, in that three-year program, they work with us year-round. Obviously, during the school year, that's not a lot of hours because their academics are the priority, but they're with us every week for a certain number of hours that their schedule will allow. And then, of course, over the summertime, they are working quite a bit, like around 30 hours a week, um, all through the summer, fully paid. Uh, and then at the end, they do have the option of either moving on to post-secondary education, or we could actually hire them as a supply chain or a, a pipeline for employment into ITS.
A little bit about, um, so we have had one apprentice, you know, through the career-wise program so far in our building maintenance department, which is a great way. It's not only great experience just to see some of those trades where, in that case, she was able to see each of the different trades, and we were able to kind of hone in on some of those interests. It's also a great opportunity for our staff, um, because they don't often have that interaction with students, and so it really kind of brings it full circle to just a reminder of why we're here. Um, so, we're hoping to continue that program in the coming years as well.
Any questions about summer employment of our students?
Questions? Nope. Thank you very, very much. It's good to hear our students are gainfully employed or have the potential. Yeah, thank you, and good luck to you, Matt.
Thank you. Well, um, since this is my last time at the podium, I'm going to take a quick little piece of privilege for one minute to just give some thanks. Um, when I first presented to the board, the late Stan Shear gave me this pin, and he said, uh, "Just put this on and they'll be with you right away." And I thought, oh, all it takes is a pin.
[laughing]
Lo and behold, he was right, because current board members and past board members have been completely supportive of everything I've tried to do to improve technology in TSD, and I really appreciate that. All the initiatives, I can't think of a one where one board member hasn't been completely supportive. Well, thank you.
Thank you. We will miss you. And just a special thank you since, um, been here since the beginning with you. And, um, I don't think a lot of people know the steps and you have taken to get this district really, really, um, on a high level. And you have worked tirelessly to help our students and our staff, and especially during the pandemic. Um, you went above and beyond. So, I just, I just want to say a special thank you because our students are better for it, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Um, nine point three, Facility Use Rate Recommendation Update. Okay.
Hey, good evening again, Madam President, Board of Education, Dr. Schaefer, Todd Picone. Yeah, tonight, I am going to invite Leah Howard, our, uh, Facility Use Manager up, to provide an update on our facility use. Um, and really, the application to this, to strive 2025 is not just what you see there in focus area two and four, but our grounds and schools really serve as a community asset. So, the purpose of tonight is really not, uh, we don't need an approval. Um, it's information, so you can see how much our schools are used by the community, and then just some fiscal information about, uh, what we bring, what we bring in. And then Leah will review, um, our current model for some pricing adjustments that we had to make because we have not in some time, and we've been behind. So, I will turn this over to Leah, and she will take it from here.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Howard, Facility Use Manager, here tonight to provide you with a brief update on the Facility Use Department, as well as, uh, recommendations for rate. I've compiled five years of data for you, um, starting with the 2016, 17 school year, ending with the 2020. I have not yet compiled this data because it's not quite complete for us. We run that, uh, that will end on June 30th. Um, so, I have more data for that later on. On average, in our facilities for the last five years, we've hosted 1,600 and On average, in our facilities for the last five years, we've hosted 1,600 and categorized these into district community events. AGA events are the ones hosted by the Town of Bertha and the City of Loveland. As you can see, as you can see, COVID really did have an impact on our number of events. That average is much lower than it was pre-COVID. We were over 18,000 events. Our top community users are childcare, youth sports, as well as religious and political. During that same timeframe, we collected on average just over 174,000. Which 90,595 went back. Schools received 50% of the space rentals. This winter, I spent quite a, quite a long time reviewing our rental rates. The last time we made any changes or even a review of those, it's been about five years since we've done that. So in order to do this, I determined our operating cost per hour. I also reviewed the rental for neighboring districts to determine an average from them with the idea that I would not recommend changes for rates that are covering our cost of operation. But I would also rely on that market data for the spaces that are, cost is too great. We can't reason to rent our rental rates. So what I discovered is that we do have some spaces that the cost to operate those is pretty high. We can't expect a youth sports organization to be able to cover all of those costs. And also several of our rates are well below the market average. And then also labor rates, obviously those need to be adjusted based on. This is the list of spaces that I'm recommending rate for. I am presenting this as a range, just for the sake of time tonight. Our rate schedule is fairly complex. Elementary schools have their own, middle schools and high schools. And within those, we have nonprofit youth rates, nonprofit adult rates, and commercials. Nine different cafeteria rates in the, I didn't want to bore you with all of those details tonight. So the first three spaces on this list, cafeterias, gymnasiums, and centers, those are our libraries. Those are spaces that the cost of operations is rather high. Those are typically our biggest in size also. Those are also the types of spaces that we've fallen really far behind in terms of, so far behind that my recommendation that we, gap is pretty great, breaking in in a smaller case, it'll be a little bit more palatable for. Some additional rate increases are grass fields. We're not far off of that market average, fairly small increase there. And then our high school wrestling rooms, again, a fairly small increase. That will actually get us up to the cost of operations. Nexus personnel. We have a team of individuals that work our facility use event on weekends. Most of them are district employees. Many, many of them qualify for overtime rates. District has been very generous with salary increases the last, as we, you know, focus on retention and the effects of COVID. Our rate has not kept up with that, and recommending an increase to offset those extra. These are new rates that I submitted to Cabinet for approval. I've been working with Kevin Clark, our district athletic director, to develop rental rates as well as policies for our turf facilities, our newer athletic facilities, our stadium, Max Mar, Ray Patterson, and then also the varsity field at, in addition to that, also a fee for the rates were set based on.
Not really a question, but in looking at the personnel list and listening to what you had to say, I'm really glad that we're able to use district personnel. This is a kind of an additional part-time job for the folks who work for our district who would like to bring in some extra money, and so I'm glad that we're able to use our district folks rather than hiring folks from outside. So good job on that.
Go ahead, Nancy. On the, where the schools get the 50% and then the 100%, is there any restrictions on what they can use it for, or it just kind of goes into that school's budget? And they can use it for school supplies or whatever needs come up?
I'd have to defer to Gordon a little bit on this, but it does go into the principal's discretionary fund, and then some of our secondary schools, like gym rentals, would go into athletics fund. And so I don't know if there's restrictions on what principals.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Gordon, you want to come up and speak some more?
Okay.
Of course.
So I just, could you just provide like a couple of examples of what these spaces are used for by community groups? And I don't have to get into tremendous detail, I'm just curious about what some of the like common uses are.
Oh, I gotcha, gotcha. So our highest user of, our highest community user, we do put our childcare in there, so our before and after care programs are all in there. Youth sports, volleyball, club basketball, a lot of Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. HOA meetings are popular uses for our space, and we do use it for, some churches do meet in our regularly. We also typically hold the caucuses for the county for both the Republican and Democrat. And it runs, again, we do a lot of dance shows and concerts. We are the home for Loveland Performing Arts, Loveland Concert Band, and the Loveland. Yes, yes, a lot of community.
No, that's helpful, thank you.
All right, thank you, Leah. Very informative. Yeah, appreciate it. 9.5 Safety and Security Update. I think there's a couple gentlemen, Todd and Joe.
There is. Thank you again for having myself, and Gordon might be called up on this, we'll see. So, bet him in the wings. Tonight I'm going to invite Joe Vajanski, our manager of Safety and Security Up, to provide the board and really community with an update on some changes we're proposing to our safety structure. So I will turn it over to Joe and let him review those changes with you.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. My name is Joe Vajanski. I serve as a Safety and Security in Thompson School District. What I want to talk to you tonight is a basis, a basic of how to reallocate our funds through our Safety and Security Program to, I think, better serve each student and also our community within the school. This is in part of Goal 2.4 of our Strive 2025 Plan to ensure all facilities are welcoming, safe, inclusive, and community. And really, in a summary of what I've written there in the bottom of the slide, it's a way to really serve each student, which is what our goal is here at Thompson, but also our staff and our community at large to provide a different layer of not only physical security but emotional security. All right, tonight we're going to review some security trends at a high level. We're going to compare our district to some other districts around our state, and then I'll go at a high level, talk about the SRO and TSD security restructuring. As we've all seen, at some level, at a national level, that we've seen an increase in some violent tendencies and things that are in our country, and TSD is not an exception to this at the time. We are seeing an increase in some threatening behavior that is resulting in a process that we use here in time called threat assessment. And then also to some of our interactions with our community members at our school sites are becoming a little bit more cautious with some of those interactions. And then also within our schools, we're seeing some kind of violent and some sexualized behavior. This is a way to address that, but also prevent it. Currently, our SRO structure is set up with two different agencies in our area. One of them is the Loveland Police Department, and the other one is Laramie County Sheriff's Office. Both agencies have a supervisor that is assigned directly to the SRO units. And as you can see there, there are eight opportunities for Loveland Police to be in our schools. Over the last few years, we've had a carried vacancy through that agency, and part of what I'm proposing is to restructure that and give, in essence, that position to the Laramie County Sheriff's Office in an effort to have a focus of physical security in our elementary schools. What I also think, and this is, process is still kind of in negotiations, is we're going to pair that SRO with a co-responder, so somebody who can also support our crisis responses that relates to mental health, that nature. This is a current picture of the current co-responder unit through the Laramie County Sheriff's Office. Laramie County Sheriff's Office, if you don't know, uses what's called priority response. This is where the mental health professional rides with the officer. And then the officer is there to, if it was a mental health call, is there to address the safety and security, but then, to be quite frank, almost excuse themselves and let the mental health professional take, take. So that is something that will be available to not only the elementary schools, but to our district as a whole. Unfortunately, both agencies, it's not unfortunate that both agencies have this service, but they are also serving our community. This person in this mental health service would be specific since school district period, which would be, I think, a welcome resource for our buildings. Here's a high-level look at some of our neighboring school districts. As you can see, there, a lot of them are actually very similar to us. They're just bigger because they have, they're a lot bigger school district. But the one area that we don't have that I'm asking to restructure is through, they call, different variations of whether it's a campus safety officer or a patrol officer. If you go, what I'm proposing is to modify some of our current campus monitor FTE and create a campus monitor two. So create a different layered availability of employment department. And then these campus monitor two folks, once they are hired onto the school district, they would have an increased focus on safety and security. That would be their primary function, and not only would they work during the school day, but they would also work into the evening. That would help support our community events, our football games, our plays, our Boys and Girls Club, all those types of things would offer a support for our community. Just to be very transparent with the folks in the audience and our community, these are kind of what I'm envisioning. These two gentlemen actually work for Jefferson County Schools, and you can see their appearance is very security-driven and security-focused, as they have a higher level of training than what a campus monitor. Obviously, they're going to be able to increase our after-hour security, our shift patrols, critical incident response, et cetera. So there's a lot of need for them in that work.
First, I really liked the way you did the Strive 2025 update. You listed the focus there, but then you really went into detail of how it, so I really liked that, so, great job. On the, in the presentation, there was some verbiage in there about there's an increase in the violent and sexualized behavior. What, what age group are we seeing the most increase in? And what do you, and when you say sexualized behavior, what are we talking about? Is it, is it happening in the bathroom, the classrooms, where?
So my focus is on criminal charges. So what happens is, is it's a statute that the local DA's office has to notify the school district, not only myself, but the school administrator of charges, whether they occur in school, off school, school grounds. It's called a DA notification. And so what we've seen is we've seen it in charges based around violence crimes that are sexual in nature. However, that does not, a lot of those charges are not on school grounds. We get them whether they occur on school grounds or off school grounds. For me, I don't have that information of where necessarily, but just that there's an.
So if it's not on school grounds, then somehow you're, where we get pulled in, or?
Yes, there's a term, it's called nexus. So should the crime or behavior have an impact on the educational environment for during the school day, then it is my office's duty to respond to those and to make sure our students are safe while they're.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Since mine's related to that, can I go next? Okay. Are we still seeing that the tickets that are written in our district for sexualized crimes are 80% female?
That, I do not know.
I realize that's a curveball that you and I did not talk about, since I haven't seen the data yet. At last number, that was the truth, and that doesn't include this school year. So I just, if we're going to talk about that, I do think it's important for us to see about the inequity of that and where that really transforms from where we were to, in other numbers, where it's primarily our male students who are getting citations. The one place, the only place, is on sexual crimes, and somehow those are female-driven, and that seems incredibly odd to me. And so if that pattern still exists, I think that that's an interesting thing that we should be keeping on our radar. Although it's a small number, the fact that it's 80% of that number is really odd. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate, I wanted to specifically say something I said in our two plus two. I'm incredibly grateful that this plan is doing literally everything that all of the experts say the district should be doing to keep our kids safe. And the, the move that Thompson has done for approximately a year now, and you worked on it for a lot longer than that, to really make sure that we've moved from, from performative security theater to actually things that will keep people safe is a big deal. And I am incredibly grateful for the work that you've done, the leadership that you've provided, the thoughtfulness that you've put into this, to this, the work that you're doing with law enforcement to help coordinate this. And I think one of the things that strikes me, there's a lot of good in this, but one of the things that strikes me is that the co-responder program isn't just something we did because we think it's a good idea, but you led the charge with our partners to realize that this is what we needed desperately in our schools, that was so many of our calls, and that's really where we could add the most value. And, and they're, not only do they agree, they're helping you to make sure that it's the right thing to do, and they're echoing that. And I know that they don't always, I won't say speak for those agencies, but I do know that law enforcement in general is not always a big fan of the co-responder program. So to hear that they are supportive of it in this environment because they know it's the right thing to do, and you've worked with them to make sure that's true, is, is really important. So thank you for doing everything you can to keep our kids safe. I really appreciate that.
Honor.
Any else? I think we all, oh, I was just.
But go ahead if you, if you want to.
I was just going to say, I think we all agree, after what we've been through in the last few weeks with our whole country.
In the two-plus-two session that I was in, when I asked you the question about additional cost, you said that your estimate was that it would be about $94,000 more. And it seems to me, hearing the presentation then, hearing it again and seeing it again tonight, makes me think that for that relatively small amount of money, we're really improving safety and security. And Todd, you can correct me on this, when I asked what the source of that money would be, I believe you said that we're, it was federal dollars, was it the ESER program or?
No, so it, the main source of funding is through allocation of the FTE that was already there.
Okay.
So it's a reallocation of that, and then some of the, and Gordon can help me with this one, but some of our mill language was directly in response to increasing the safety and security of our school district, and then that included the SRO program, so it's out of fund 10. Oh, Todd's going to help me.
So two pieces. One is there is some mill dollars that cover mainly the SROs, but there is some general fund dollars that this will have to come to help cover these costs. So with keeping the FTE at the buildings there, there'll be additional campus monitor two that will encompass, I'll say, around, we're working with Dr. Severs to create the actual FTE and cost of what the range would be, plus the benefits to get that overall in cost. So it's not. So it's not, I can say it's not ESER, it's mostly the mill that was approved by the voters for the SROs, and then additional general fund dollars to help cover, I'd say, the gap between those.
So I think it's great that a reallocation of dollars, not asking for additional money, is providing this additional layer, this additional level of safety and security. So thanks and congratulations on that. This is really important.
You. Anybody else? All right. Thanks, guys. All right. I'm point five. 2022-2023 Equity Strategies. And I believe it's Melissa Gordon and maybe others.
Good evening, Madam President, Board members, Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Schneider, Chief Academic Officer. I am joined tonight by my colleague, Mr. Gordon Jones. As we co-present, this microphone's gonna beep on me too, as we co-present on behalf of the Superintendent's Cabinet, the update on equity implementation strategies. And we, we chose to present this as a cabinet because it is a district-wide initiative that spans all of our divisions and all of our departments and processes within our divisions, and found it fitting to join together to present these to you tonight. Of course, no presentation would be complete without its alignment to Strive 2025. And so here we've lifted out our equity language in Strive 2025 in some of those areas. So you'll see language like culturally responsive, eliminating disparities, communication, as well as stewardship of resources and, and others. I'm not going to read them all to you, but these were the pieces of Strive 2025 in our strategic plan where we have the equity language embedded.
I have a background.
Look, I didn't know I was up so soon there, sorry. This timeline is one that the board has seen in the past, and I think the important consideration to look at here or understand is this work did not start in the last six months. This started in 2019. Option of the equity policy by the board at that time. And so you can see an historical reference point, current reference point, and. So not a recent initiative, but something that's been ongoing.
This next slide talks about the equity framework, which you've seen this graphic many times, and the five components that have been developed upon passing the equity policy in 2020. Going clockwise, we have inclusive family guardian and community input, culturally competent and diverse staff, professional learning for equity, multilingual communication, and equitable resource allocation, and noting that in the center of all of this, it's for the betterment and improvement of what we can offer our students. And so that's why we place the students right there at the center. Also, this represents the titles of the five equity committees that met during this past winter, which you all were a part of those. And we had representation from all levels of employee groups. We had board members on those committees, we had cabinet sponsors on those committees. And it was an exciting time because each committee went through a review of many pieces of research, many recommendations, many, many pieces of strategies that were known to impact students or districts in certain ways, and came up with recommendations. And from there, these were, these were given input by eight different forums, including students and staff and all level of employee groups over the course of the past few months. And so tonight, we are going to, and as well as you at the board study session. So tonight, we have kind of our finalized implementation strategies as an outcome of that. So I will go right ahead and share these, and you will notice that the titles are aligned with those five components of the framework that you just saw. So this first one, inclusive family guardian and community input strategies recommended for this next school year. Strategy one, connect with community partners, including faith-based organizations and local businesses for outreach, partnership, and input. Strategy two, create a plan for schools in the district to host a variety of family and community-based events. And strategy three, provide forums that allow families to share feedback with staff and leaders regarding specific cultural topics and experiences. And as we reviewed these, it felt good to know that many of these practices were our normal habits of the way that we do work here at Thompson School District. And so we only want to be able to get better at these, but this felt like a refreshing first start for us in this area. I believe Gordon's talking about this one.
The next strategy, or the next area from the five parts of the framework, multilingual communication. You can see the items there, but strategy one, these three strategies are the ones that rose to the top through the work that I just talked about with the various stakeholder groups. Strategy one, principals, teachers, and district staff having access to and training in the use of multilingual translation, multilingual translation and interpretation tools. There are specific examples that are provided on this slide for each one of these strategies to give the board and the community of what those products are that are already in place in the district that can be leveraged to take the body or the usability to a level. Strategy two, district and school-wide communication to be provided for Spanish via written and oral. And strategy three, the district will develop and determine threshold points that the distribution and interpretation of additional languages. This refers to determining what that threshold is. That work hasn't been done yet, that's why you can see those action verbs, develop, determine, what is that X number of, of families or students that would create that tipping point or necessitate the need for. To that particular.
Our next area is culturally competent and diverse staff. Strategy one, gather input from multiple internal and external diverse stakeholders, including community members. Strategy two, create a culturally responsive hiring process and retention plan to employ the best qualified staff. Strategy three, involve diverse staff in a culturally responsive hiring process and retention plan for the selection of the best qualified staff. Again, as we looked at these and thought about our processes that we have in place, we were excited, as we are also curious and improving ourselves in these areas, but also knowing that we have, we're a little ways down the road on them as well. So that was exciting. Next is professional learning for equity. Strategy one, implement staff development in culturally responsive practices with specific strategies for understanding and identifying, responding, and eliminating bias, prejudice, and discrimination to ensure a welcoming, safe, and inclusive learning and working environment. Strategy two, offer high-quality differentiated professional development, addressing culturally responsive and sustaining practices through ongoing training across the system for all employee groups. And I'll comment on, on this in the way that we have already been doing this as well. The state has mandated a couple of things that we have followed suit with, and one is the ELPD pathway. And it is a requirement that our teachers have 45 hours out of their 90 of seat time professional development when they go to renew their license, and that is a state mandate. We had the opportunity as a school district to create those 45 hours of classes, there's five of them that add up to 45 hours for our teachers, and started that about three years ago. And we have had hundreds of our teachers, substitutes, classified staff members, we have opened, is free of charge, and we have embedded that in our professional development offerings in Thompson School District with these themes in them. And secondly, as we look forward into next year, a priority that we already have embedded in our plans is to be able to offer some leadership, professional development for our evaluators, our principals and administrators, as the Colorado Department of Education has embedded places in their rubric to evaluate educational equity, and we want to make sure that we're educated and ready to do that and notice things. And Gordon, you have this one.
This would be expected than to have me talk about equitable resource allocation, and I know that's been part of the conversation that we've had this evening already. So a couple of strategies associated with this, with this particular item, conducting that resource allocation review, to make sure that the dollars are being directed where necessary, to identify those inequalities, indicate what those are, make sure the community is aware of those, and then directing the dollars that benefit as far as the equity policy, not enforcing, but implementing that's in place. Strategy two, promoting and advertising those partnerships that are already in place. The Sunrise Health Source Center that the district operates, those types of things to make sure people are aware are already in place with it. As we look forward to next steps for the 2223 year, there's some things that have risen to the top as well, which is, again, action verbs that you'll see developing action plans under each strategy. So there's strategies that have been identified in each one of the five component areas, further developing those action plans that, those strategies, determining resource considerations. What, what are the true costs that are associated with a program? And what are we doing right now within the district that's built into, opted this evening that are already in place and don't require any additional resources? There are a lot of those items, as you saw from some of the examples for multilingual communication, that are, are products or technology that's already in place within the district that can be for the benefit. Then providing an update to the board in fall of 2022 of what that work has looked like, what, what that, that strategy or developing those action plans that will first cement or implement strategies that were identified.
Questions from you?
So just to extend a bit before you have questions, our, our plan this evening was to bring forward the strategies which were shared with the board at the working session as a result of months of feedback. We want to confirm with you that we heard that these were, in fact, the strategies. Then we will develop specific action plans under these strategies, and then, early in the fall, August, September, bring these forward to you to say, this is how we're going to accomplish these.
Clarify as well. Questions at all?
Not a question, but a comment. Last week, Dr. Schaefer and I spoke to the Loveland Berthold Board of Realtors, and at the end of our presentation, there were several questions asked by members of the audience. And one of the questions that was directed to me, I didn't know the answer to, so I deferred to Dr. Schaefer. And I think those here tonight, and the members of the community who are watching at home, might be interested in the answer to that question as well. And the question was, when will the feedback offered at the Equity Open House be available to the public? And so I'll send it over to you.
Sure. So I think as Melissa and Gordon shared, we, we got input from many groups. And the most recent group was the Board of Education, which happened in late May. And so what we are in the process of doing right now is curating and disaggregating all of this information into taking the questions and answering them, looking at the themes and drawing them out. And then we will get that posted, and our commitment is by July. So by the summer, everything that we heard, that was shared, questions that were asked, like, we're not going to go line by line every question, but certainly the constellation of, of the feedback into themes, as well as the, the questions that evolved and emerged from all of the groups, will be shared, and then we will post that on the TSD website.
Thank you. Dawn?
I had a couple of things, and I'm really sorry I didn't get a chance to email them. They honestly popped in my head as I watched your presentation instead of as I looked at the slides. So I apologize that this is off the cuff. So in the multilingual communication slide, we talked, there's the bullet point around the threshold, and that was something that we worked, we talked about when we met. And what strikes me as I sit here reading it on this slide is that if we have a threshold, then that is not equal to each, unless the threshold is zero. Right? We are, if we say that we must have 5% of our student population, or whatever number, then, then we are also saying that we only want to communicate effectively with whatever the other, the opposite of that number is, right? That we are purposely excluding people. Each has been a really important word for us, and so I just thought about that, and I realized that there was lots of complexity to each of these words, but that's what raises to be there. Specifically, when I think about talking to people in, in the language that they can understand, what most recently comes to my mind is when we had a lockout at my daughter's school, and the communication did not go out, and it was, I think, the day of a school shooting. And our children who had been outside playing were rushed inside. My daughter was told to run, and it was terrifying, and she was not the only child who had that. And if we are saying that there is any parent who doesn't deserve to understand our safety or our educational needs, I, I, I don't think that's what we want to say. I know that to be not what we want to say. So I'm thinking that we might need to work on that a little bit more as we proceed. The second one is on, my second thought, is around the equitable resource allocation. We use the term, you can go back to that one, inequalities instead of inequities. They are not the same word, and it is really important that we choose which word we're going to review. Inequalities are probably something we have a pulse on already. Inequities, we don't. So when we looked at equitable resource allocation, it is not, it is not equal resource allocation, and I just would like to throw that out there as we continue to do this work. Thank you for all this. I know how incredibly thoughtful we've been on this, and so I hate it when I'm like, at the end and going, wait, but, wait, but it's the work, right? Every day, we're getting new feedback. So I just wanted to share those two pieces because I think that you have done a really great job of incorporating feedback that we've heard from a lot of people over a lot of time, and we are so darn close, and so, thank you.
Andra?
Just to piggyback on that, I had the exact same thought about the translation, the threshold that I know at our study session, we talked about it, and it seemed like a great idea, but then hearing it tonight also, I was like, well, the threshold should be one, right? If there's any. So I agree with Dawn that that is something to consider for.
So I have a couple concerns, and so making sure that everybody's aware of where I stand. On the open house forum, what concerns me is that we are looking at identifying what we think are the most important things to focus on, but we still don't have the results of that open house forum where all of the people went around and put their, all of their dots in their notes. And I think we're missing an important segment of information of what the community does or does not want. My other big concern is, is on the professional development for equity. I, I think, I think, I still believe it is unreasonable to expect teachers to all now also be responsible for eliminating, because that's what the language says, eliminating prejudice, bias, discrimination, racism, as we're trying to focus on being inclusive. I mean, I think for a lot of people that watch these meetings, I think it's pretty apparent that even this board struggles with how to be inclusive and respect diversity of thought and perspective. And now we're going to have teachers have this added responsibility when their plates are already so full, and we did not specifically go out and seek their input. Per Dr. Gabriel, their way of doing input was they could come after hours after a day of teaching to the open house forum, whereas other groups like the cabinet and principals, they had meetings specifically. So that's a big concern. For me to want to move forward, I think teachers should be involved in the discussion. I think teachers should be involved in the discussion, um, a lot more than what they have been. And again, I'm very concerned with the direction of the professional development.
Can I just bring up a concern I have about the open forum results? It was reported to me by at least a dozen people that we had flawed data in that. And I, I, I don't know if I'm the only one who heard that, but I had people whose hair was on fire. They were like, shut it down because somebody's going around and putting up all one color sticker or another. And, um, there was a real concern, i- i- if we're trying to do that as something that's precise, it's no longer precise. So in, instead of just the feedback of yes, there's, you know, you're on track, off track or need more information, which was the intention, we had some people going in and being, you know, uh, aggressive, so to speak, with what they put up there. I just wanted to check that, um, that I'm not the only one who saw and heard that. And I don't know if that's why we're taking, um, and needing more time to work through the results, but we also had, uh, hundreds of people here writing comments and questions and thoughts, um, and that is a lot of information. And, and we've been questioned about how much money we're spending on the project. So I wonder about how all that flows together and if I'm off base.
Dawn, I received that same feedback.
All done. Yeah.
We've had lots of other surveys. I mean, our surveys aren't scientific, so I, I'm not sure quite what the point is, but we're basing all of this on unscientific surveys and anecdotal data presented as evidence. So I'm not sure what this has to do with anything, but.
I, I guess I just brought it up because I did have so many people concerned about the process versus the, that, that may have skewed the results. And, and so that's why I bring it up. I bring it up because I had so many people, overwhelmingly, that was the thing that people came to me about. And, um, and then they added, I saw this on the wall and I wanna talk about that. But when I, you know, the people who called me, that was the thing that they were calling. So yes, we are not, we don't have statisticians doing our surveys as long, as far as I know, unless that changed. But I do think that was an important piece of us trying to navigate the feedback that we've got because it felt like, um, that was pro, there were a lot of people there and that was a, a facilitation where we didn't facilitate to try to make sure that there was some support in that. And that was intentional, um, right? That was the method we chose. But the method we chose was to let people do what they were gonna do. And what we saw is that people frankly didn't have any, any, um, they made a choice not to do the few simple things we asked them to do. And that is why I think that's worth bringing up.
Example would be they weren't even reading the points. They were simply covering it with dots. Any further questions? And is there something you want us to do with this tonight or is this just information?
This is information again. Our commitment is to bring this forward, um, yeah.
Okay. We'll look forward to it then in the fall. Guys have a lot of work to do this summer then. All right. Thank you very, very much. All right. Um, there is one written report and it's the Families Partner in Education Report. It's probably from our May meeting, I believe. Our June one happened while we were, some of us were in, uh, Washington DC at a head start meeting. So that wouldn't be those. So it's probably that, uh, the May one. Future agenda items were kind of open as far as what's happening since we all are going to enjoy the month of bye off. We won't be seeing each other and cabinet. I hope you all have an opportunity to have a little bit of a break in your busy life. However. Okay, yeah, you don't have to do any presentations for us for, for a little while. So, uh, we do have a study session tomorrow afternoon with CASB. And just would ask that you bring your CASB notebook with you if you can locate it. And if you have your card, um, the Robert's Rule ordered in. Otherwise, um, are there, I, I don't think there's any other agenda items for tonight or any other comments, questions? All right, then I'm going to call, um, close the meeting. Meeting is over.